Good evening. As chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, and there are so many of you, so great to see you all tonight, and our television viewers. The board superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the board are open to the public. They are times when the board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular school meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cellphones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time to join us this evening. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del diecinueve de noviembre del dos mil veinticuatro. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público, por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos las gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Before we get to public comment, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Torres Rodriguez for some recognition.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. As some of you might know, our district has been working very, very hard to improve attendance across all of our schools. And thanks to the hard work and commitment of our student engagement specialists, family and community support service providers, our school leaders, our staff, our members of our attendance culture, climate, and engagement teams, plus the collaboration of our families and our partners, I am proud to say that we have made significant improvements in reducing chronic absenteeism, and we are currently trending in the right direction. We're currently trending to meet our goal with ninety percent average daily attendance and twenty-six percent chronic absenteeism. Still ways to go, but we're making a lot of progress. And one of the many initiatives designed to increase awareness about the attendance is our Arts for Attendance Contest. It is something that we've done for five years now, and we've asked our students and our staff to create videos, visual art representations, and slogans that demonstrate why attendance is important. And this year, the submissions from across the district received sixteen hundred votes from our community. And I am proud to say that the winners are here with us tonight. So when I announce your name and your school name, please stand and come forward, and then we'll take a group photo at the end. So the winner of the attendance visual poster, it was a student collaboration. Erica Kretzinski and Stephen Fish from Miss Louis's Grade Seven Art Class from Manzuli Gifted and Talented Academy. And we can see their beautiful creation up on the screen there. Right, about being champions? You can't be a champion unless you come to school. And the winner of the slogan contest is Seadard Polynepian, a student at Betanza's Early Reading Lab in Ms. Erin Booth's fourth grade class. And the slogan, "Success is based on attendance. The more you show up, the more successful you will be." And the winner of the video contest is Wish Museum School. Now, there's a, you know, Wish Museum School, I just have to say, you know, they have a studio. Kids produce their own content. There's a lot of creativity happening there. And let's see the video.
Hartford, why should you come to school?
Because I miss this.
Because I miss this.
Because I miss this. Good morning, Mrs. Ryan.
Aw, good morning.
Because I miss this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Because I miss this.
The wine don't sell.
Good morning.
Because I miss this.
Because I miss this.
Because I miss this.
Respiration.
Because I miss this.
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 Because I miss this. Action.
Because I miss this.
Don't miss out, Hartford. Come to school.
So all of these winning designs will be used for our two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six attendance campaign. So I want to congratulate all of the students for being leaders in their community, for sharing your creativity, your important messages about attendance, and a huge, huge thank you and lots of love and appreciation to our teachers, our administrators, our families for guiding our students along the way. So please, let's give it one more round of applause for our winners. And board members, join us for a picture, please.
Again, congratulations to all the students and great job. So great to see you all out tonight. We will now move on to public comment. Mr. Mills?
We, as a board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish. Thank you.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también de compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas si fuera necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará, dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Sarah Kovak.
What an act to follow, huh? Members of the Hartford Board of Education, my name is Sarah Kovak. I am a former Hartford Public Schools teacher and currently the lead organizer in Hartford for Educators for Excellence Connecticut. Since two thousand and thirteen, we have worked with over one thousand teachers throughout Connecticut, including almost five hundred in Hartford Public Schools, who are united by our shared declaration of principles and beliefs. At this critical time for HPS, E for ECT has engaged Hartford teachers as key stakeholders to inform HPHS, or HPS's, excuse me, new strategic plan. The information I'm about to share with you has already been emailed to you and has been presented to the superintendent, mayor's office, and Blue Ribbon Commission leadership. We have surveyed over three hundred Hartford teachers across twenty-five different schools, and will continue to gather data through the end of the week. A final report will be available to the board by your December meeting. As we know, teachers offer invaluable frontline insights into student needs and classroom realities. Over the past three months, teachers throughout Hartford have identified three top strategic planning priorities: teacher recruitment and retention, high-quality teaching and learning, and student social, emotional, and mental well-being. Of these top priorities, the vast majority of teachers identified teacher recruitment and retention as their top priority. Teachers also identified three top desired policy shifts: provide additional annual pay for teachers in hard-to-staff schools and subjects to address vacancies; provide additional pay for highly effective teachers to retain them; and better align professional learning to curriculum and teacher needs. Teachers are aware of the district's financial situation, and we know that ideally, all teachers should make more. However, through our focus groups and data collection, it is clear that the most pressing vacancies are among special education teachers. These shortages impact the entire district. We will host a focus group of special education teachers tomorrow and incorporate their ideas and comments into our final report. As Hartford spearheads their strategic plan, we must listen to educators and give them everything they need to educate our students throughout Hartford successfully. Thank you for your time today, and we look forward to continuing our work together. Thank you.
Mike Sosse.
Good evening. First off, I want to give a shout-out to Board Member Mills. We had, we tried to, at Hartford High, we tried to, you know, one of our things for attendance, actually, because you had brought up attendance, is doing student activities where they get to play staff in various sports, and some we lose, some we do terrible. And in the case that Board Member Mills was, is very terrible, and where he was our best player by far. I think you scored both goals. Without hesitation, without even hesitation, just, let's just say, I'm not going to be going for Hartford Athletic. But I do appreciate, when we got into the huddle, you had said, oh, you're the guy from public comment. Which leads me, and also, Board Member Tatum, when I'd seen you in public, I got the same, the same thing. You're the guy from public comment. Which leads me to, I'm happy that I have that reputation, that you guys know that, all of you on the board member, you know that I advocate for my school, one way or another. Okay, I started in the spring of last year advocating for retaining teachers within my school. Today, what I'm going to advocate for are the respect of our SSOs. So you all know what happened in our school, not this past Friday, but the Friday before. You know, it's a deep tragedy that happened. It actually happened two doors down from my classroom. I appreciate the message that you had sent out regarding that incident, and I also appreciate the fact that you did not tell the press exactly what happened in the classroom, for respect for the family. I do appreciate that. It is noticed. However, our SSOs, I don't believe, got a certain type of respect. So as teachers, SSOs, anybody who was involved with that, we were told, okay, you can go home. Because there was a lot of trauma. And so two of our SSOs had gone home, and one SSO had helped somebody else go home. And they got yelled at by their supervisor that same day. I dealt with trauma being two doors down, but those people who had gotten yelled at, they actually gave CPR to, those people had given CPR to that poor lady. And I just don't find it as fair as that they had gotten reprimanded, a formal reprimand, if I'm not mistaken, about that from, I believe, Mr. Donas. I hope that you see this in the light that I do, that they shouldn't have gotten that disrespect that they had. And I hope that you can respect them, the SSOs, as much as I respect my SSOs.
Rachel Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Taylor. I'm an HPS alum and a parent leader. This fall, I founded a special education parent-teacher organization. We are a community of Hartford parents, teachers, and students who come together to learn, educate, organize, and advocate on issues that affect students with special needs. It is our intention to speak to the board as often as possible in order to keep students with special needs front and center in members' minds as you make decisions for our schools. I have three children, the youngest of whom has Down Syndrome. It pains me to admit that before Benji, I knew very little about special education. I did not realize that the way a school system handles special education in action, not words, cuts to the core of the values and quality of that system. You must be aware that when it comes to serving students with special needs, Hartford Public Schools is not okay. I have talked to many parents who have tried to navigate special education in Hartford, and the same themes come up: lack of transparency and lack of resources. To start with transparency... Sorry, I have pneumonia. On the Hartford Public Schools website, the section about student support services links to a mishmash of general external resources, such as state-provided IEP guides. I could not find any information about specific special education programs or school-based offerings in Hartford. Contrast this with the West Hartford Public Schools website, where short, informative paragraphs describe the specific programs that the district offers to support students and the schools in which they're found. This is the information that, as a parent, I want. I don't know if Hartford is trying to hide this information, does not realize that parents would like this information, or most worrisomely, but I think most accurately, does not have the programs in place to fully serve students with a range of needs. This gets to the issue of resources. Every parent I have spoken to has described PPT meetings as feeling confrontational, with the parents trying to get the supports their students need, the district trying to deny providing the needed supports, and the schools stuck in the middle. Now, I've been in Hartford schools for almost forty years. I know there is no magic wand. However, I also know we can do better. I ask the board to seriously examine how resources are being allocated within the district. In addition, the State Assembly is considering waiting school district funding to reflect special education needs, a change which would bring millions of needed dollars to Hartford. HPS should be advocating actively for this at the state level. If this funding stream does get approved, I implore the board to direct this money directly to special education. It must not just become part of the general school budget. At the last monthly meeting, the superintendent claimed in discussing the awful case of the high school student whose needs were never served and who graduated from Hartford Public Schools unable to read or write, that HPS always ensures that students with special needs get the services they need. I am sure that she, like I, wished that were the case. However, it is patently and heartbreakingly untrue. I would like to know if there is any member of the board willing to make special education their focus, to ensure that students with special needs are always at the table when decisions are being made. Our students, parents, and teachers deserve that. Thank you.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent of schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a Hartford resident and president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. HFT applauds the Board of Ed's request for a deeper look into the central office budget, and I appreciate that there are copies of that out there that we can all get. That information shared does provide greater transparency to that budget and possibly might even help find where some savings might be achieved within it. Tonight's agenda, the Policy Committee report indicated under New Business that school consolidation will be a subject for future discussion. Therefore, the bulk of my comments tonight will be points that I hope you will consider when this topic comes up for discussion. Research shows that school closures disproportionately impact Black and Brown communities, affecting students socially, academically, behaviorally, and emotionally. Neighborhood schools were, at one point, the center of our communities in Hartford. Students enjoyed friendships that carried outside of school and into their neighborhoods. School functions brought parents and families together, creating bonds of neighbors and friends. This nexus of community was disrupted by the voluntary desegregation efforts of the magnet and charter school movement, and then further dismantled by school closures in previous school consolidation efforts by the Hartford Board of Education. When consolidations are being discussed, it is largely neighborhood schools that go on the chopping block. I can think of at least a dozen neighborhood schools that have closed in Hartford during my career, yet only one magnet school, and a very small magnet school at that. Beyond the loss of a community fixture, a school closure means the destruction of history, tradition, programs, relationships, trust, and a sense of belonging. I have been through school closures in Hartford, as well as the creation of new schools. Closures spark anxiety, stress, and uncertainty, while the development of traditions in new schools takes years to solidify. If you were to consider one factor that does the most to support students in attending to the tasks of learning, I ask you to consider the factor of predictability. Students thrive in environments that are predictable. Predictability comes from stability, from having the same adults working in your school each year, and from knowing who your teacher will be next year and what projects you might be engaged in when you get that teacher. Predictability comes from knowing a building and how to find one's way and what wing you might need to attend in the previous, in the next year. Predictability comes from trusting the adults in your school to know who you are, who your family is, what your unique needs might be. Predictability comes from classmates that have been together so long they accept each other's personalities, differences, or idiosyncrasies. The flip side of predictability is anxiety and worry, and I have seen what that does to the learning. When students don't know what to expect, they worry. And worry definitely interferes with the brain's ability to attend to learning. Our students already struggle with enough worry and anxiety. Schools are supposed to be the one place that is predictable, a safe haven. Do not take that away from the communities that rely on them. Thank you.
Michael Downs.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent, my name is Michael Downs, Seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. I want to offer congratulations to Wish School for their efforts and their attendance. And there is a lot of work that went into that, and work on part of the teachers and the principal and the vice principal and the students. And of course, that is a school that's close to my home and close to my heart. And I spent a lot of time there. And so, congratulations to Wish School. And I'm sad, as president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers, I have to mention the sad passing of Dorrette Jarrett. She was a longtime member of our union, and she was active in our union. And she'll be missed. But I want to thank Hartford High for all their efforts on her behalf. And thank you. I also want to mention something I mentioned, I think, last month or the month before, about more money for the inner-city schools, such as Wish, Sand, Rossin, for at least, just a little bit of money for just one more tutor for the after-school program. Our special education students need it, and some of our other students that are on the... Our special education students need it, and some of our other students that are on the border and in school that need it. And it's very helpful to parents. So if we could come up with just a little bit more money for at least one more tutor for the after-school program. And I want to bring up something that came up recently. I read in, I think, either the Wall Street Journal or New York Times concerning the fact that, as I've mentioned before, there's the need for bringing vocational technical education back to the, our school system, especially our high schools and middle schools, and because 65% of the high school graduates at Hartford are prepared for gainful employment. Nationwide, the bottom 10% of all high school graduates, we're not talking about dropouts, we're talking about high school graduates, two-thirds are male. And then, of course, the top 10%, only one-third are male. And in this most recent election, that was shown, because many of the minority men who are high school graduates were quite angry, showed their anger in not being able to gain a gainful employment or fulfill their employment dreams. And I think that vocational technical education would be a great asset. Thank you.
Raquel Calderon.
Good evening, Dr. Torres and members of the board, in the audience. I'm here to give you a good news. It is my honor to announce that, to the audience and to everyone here, that Renshulli Academy is now being recognized as a Category One School of Distinction in the state of Connecticut. A couple of the students were here today, and Dr. Renshulli Academy has been identified and recognized as a School of Distinction for high performance and growth in math in the state of Connecticut. Renshulli has demonstrated success significantly, closing the achievement gap between high and low performing students, besides achieving substantial progress from years 2022, 2023, and 2023 and '24. 2022 and '23 was Ms. Sierra, the principal, and now is Ms. White, Dr. White. Renshulli is the first Hartford public school that ever achieved Category One, and congratulations to Renshulli. Category One School of Distinction is a school that has demonstrated exceptional students' performance in academic growth over multiple years, not only one, multiple years. Renshulli Academy is the only high-performance, notable, and academic growth, substantial improvement, graduation with high cumulative grade point average. Congratulations, Renshulli Academy. I am extremely happy to be a part of Renshulli Academy. I am an essential worker, and I've been working for them for more than seven years. And thank you to Renshulli Academy, awesome and hard-working teachers, and of course, principals Dr. Marissa White and Ms. Francie Sierra. And I hope the Board of Directors visit Renshulli School, so does Dr. Torres. Thank you.
John Walton.
Good evening, superintendent and distinguished board members. I must admit, I'm a little nervous this evening, because this is a very intimate setting, but I'll do my best. And also, good evening to the audience and to the Coalition of Unions. I will be trying to summarize some of the things that they've been speaking to you. I am not the expert on academics, and they have given you enough information to talk about the academic component, so I'm going to focus on culture and climate. And allow me, please, to speak to the audience a little bit. Hartford community, during our national election, no matter where you sat on the side of that decision, one thing that both sides could agree on was that, and could question was, where's our democracy going? Where's it headed? And we found out in that national election that Connecticut and Hartford in particular does not have the final say as who's going to be the head of the ship. So what we need to do is inform our community about where they can make the most difference, and that's at the local level. And at the local level, right, what is the apex of a thriving community? Well, Dr. Claude Anderson said that at that apex is education. The mayor would say, "That's my biggest budget bucket list," because if we don't focus on education, then we'll impact crime and everything else that happens in our community. So how do we get there? And I was at a meeting earlier today, and one of the staple points was about trust and building trust. Well, how does our community begin to build that trust? Hartford has a unique community. We might not be the best educated, we might not have all the credentials and the accolades. One thing that is unique to Hartford residents is we can sense genuineness, and who's really here for the right reasons, and who's really here for the people of this community. So when we build this trust, right, when I first took over as union president in my campaign and my first address to this board and the ones previous, was about character, behavior, and investment, not about color. It's about representing, character, behavior, and investment. And you saw, over the course of my presidency as a union president, that many people who did not exhibit those characteristics exited Hartford Board of Education. And now we have a new group of people in the positions that once were occupied by people who didn't exhibit this type of behavior. But the system didn't change, right? So I would come up here and I would give concerns to the board, and the board would look at me and other people would say, "Well, John, we've diversified. We've done what you asked." But we didn't change the systems. The same systems that failed us in the past are failing us now. I'll give you a great example of one, so that you guys can reference. How could you have a harassment committee where the cards are stacked, the deck is stacked, in administration's favor? So when people who want a fair process go through this process, we have administrators who sit on the process that make decisions on everyone, and those administrators don't change. Now, I know a lot of these administrators, and they're good people, but that still doesn't change the fact that anybody making the decision, it should be a random group of people making a democratic decision on a specific case that are objective to the case, not someone who answers to a boss who then can navigate the decision in the best interests of themselves and of administrators. Now, superintendent, you may not know a lot of these things, because it doesn't get brought to you until you get to a specific meeting or board meetings. But, you know, I would, I would go to my meetings, and many times, we would send in agenda items two months in advance, a month in advance about our concerns. And when we get to our meetings, right, you, we find out that there's no answers to our concerns, there's not even been conversation, or we get told stuff like this. Well, I haven't had a chance to talk to that person. And if you've been in the Board of Education for any time, and you've seen your new area where the board is, people's offices are 20, 30 feet away from each other. So how could you come to a meeting where you know all of the agenda items, know the concerns, and then tell the people in that meeting, "Well, I haven't had a chance to talk about it yet," or "I need to go talk to someone else"? Now, I find that to be very disrespectful, because that is not what the taxpayers of Hartford should be paying for, right? We should not have people sitting at high levels that can't get anything done, right? Their productivity should be, is predicated on what they get paid, right? If, if, if we were running a corporation and the productivity is nothing got done, then the person that was responsible for getting things done or accountable for getting things done wouldn't be a part of that process anymore, now would they? Now, I know that's not an easy subject, because many of these people we have coffee with, we have relationships with, but we are public servants. And one of the things, superintendent, I've never heard many of your cabinet level, because some of them have, but many of your cabinet levels say, "I'm here as a public servant." I've heard them say their managers, or their supervisors, or their chiefs, or their directors, or they're this and they're that, and, but I've never heard them say, "I am a public servant. How can I serve you?" And that's the number-one thing we are: public servants. And, and that's how you establish trust. That's how you build relationships. I'll give you, so I asked this board and the board previous to it, I asked, "Do you see us as a partner?" Well, superintendent, I'm here to answer that question. They don't see us as a partner, as much as you've been trying. We're not seen as partners. We're seen as the nobodies, especially in local 566, because they're just cooks, they're just custodians, they're just maintenance workers. Don't even invite them to the table. So I had to fight to get to a table just to have a conversation, so I appreciate this opportunity, because it took so much to get to this table to be able to have a conversation with you, and to be able to open up your eyes to what really happens. Culture and climate is bad, because the people that are here working are not viewed as partners. They're viewed as subordinates. And as long as they're viewed that way, then attitude reflects leadership. So if we want to know where the problems are, where the poor spending is, it's at the leadership. Because many times that we've, and allow me just a few more seconds, your grievance process, which causes you the board a fortune. We've told the individuals at our point processes that, hey, this isn't worth grieving, right? During COVID, while you guys were able to work at home, we had to come in. We didn't argue, we didn't fight, our members came in. They worked. But then, when we asked to be compensated by our contract for coming in, we were told no, and literally had to go arbitrated at the state level in order to be compensated fairly by the language of our own contract. Because, again, we weren't viewed as partners. We were viewed as subordinates, the nobodies, the have-nots. And now we're here to say, we're in the year 2024, this is the year, if many people believe in the spiritualism, this is the year of accountability. The community is now going to hold everyone accountable, whether we share cultural relations or not. Everyone will be accountable for what they do for this community. We will all stand and work together. I am very hopeful about this board. I was hopeful about the meeting this morning. When we can translate the conversation into action is when we move forward. So I commend this board, I thank you for this opportunity. I know I always run over, and it's difficult to have these type of conversations, but I thank you, I appreciate you, and I hope that I'm really talking to you, that you can understand it and hear exactly what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who came out to speak tonight. We always appreciate your words, so thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to the report of the chair. I have a few updates for everyone. The Blue Ribbon Commission continues to meet and hold public meetings, which are livestreamed to the public. There are three remaining meetings scheduled at this time, and I say at this time, there may be more. The, there's one going on right now, tonight, Tuesday, November 19th. Then there's one Wednesday, December 4th, and Wednesday, December 11th. I encourage those who are interested in learning more to visit the website, where you can find agendas, meetings, meeting recordings, and links, link to the live meetings. And that website is hartfordbluerybden.com. The strategic plan continues to move forward. I wanted to thank everyone who's participated so far, from surveys to focus groups. We are grateful for the time that you took to provide feedback and your own visions for the future of our schools. We, as board members, continue to meet one-on-one with our consultants to ensure we are up to speed and to be sure we're also participating in the process. Today's several board meetings also attended the State of the District event with Dr. Torres Rodriguez, which we, where we had the chance to hear from our local CBOs or community business, sorry, community-based organizations who serve our students as part of the strategic planning process. If you haven't already completed the survey but wish to participate, you can find the survey online at hartfordschools.org. In recent weeks, board members had the pleasure of visiting Weaver High School, Sand School, and UH SSE. We had the chance to learn more about challenges and opportunities at the schools we visited by talking with principals, teachers, and paraprofessionals while seeing the school day in action. We are grateful for the time spent with each person during our visits and are eager to learn and see firsthand how the decisions the board makes impact the students and those who support the students day in and day out. We look forward to scheduling future visits and to learning more with each and every discussion. The board is convening the Legislative and Advocacy Task Force. We are working to finalize the members of the task force and schedule meetings in the coming weeks. We look forward to working towards the collective goal of advocating for the students in the Hartford Public Schools. More information will be forthcoming as the task force membership is finalized. Lastly, I wanted to give a moment of thanks. So as we head into the season of giving thanks, I wanted to take a moment to express gratitude to each and every staff member at Hartford Public Schools. Whether you work directly with students, or if you support those that do, the work you do is unbelievably important and does not go unnoticed. Your dedication day in and day out to our young people is life-changing and incredibly appreciated. I also want to express my gratitude to my fellow board members. The time and energy you dedicate to students is incredibly important, and I am grateful for the honor to serve beside you every day. And lastly, I wanted to thank the family members, friends, and significant others who allow us as board members to be here and to serve the district. Without your support, we couldn't do what we do. To each and every person who has a part in the education of the students at HPS, thank you. Thank you for all you do. I am grateful for each and, each of you every single day. As a reminder, you can find the superintendent's report, full committee reports, student reports, all attachments and videos in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. This month, we discussed all contracts that are up for vote tonight at each relevant committee, as well as a student services and special education overview at the Teaching and Learning Committee. We discussed a request to rename Classical Magnet School, the elected board vacancy, and impressed the importance of revisiting the school-closing consolidation policy at the Policy Committee. And I would like to put a, put a note here to say that we are only discussing the policy as the last time there were school closures and consolidations, there was no, policy was trying to be amended at that time. So our goal is just to look at the policy, so if this does come up in the future, we have a policy in place. So I just wanted to caveat that, and please feel free to watch that, watch that meeting online, it was a very good meeting. They're all good meetings. Received an overview of community schools at the Family and Community Engagement Committee, and we reviewed the monthly budget report for Period III and had a comprehensive overview of the central office at the Finance Committee. Lastly, at this month's workshop meeting, we dive deeper into key drivers for equitable access to high-quality learning experiences and an overview of professional learning. All committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed, as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I highly encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. We now move on to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you, and thank you for your words of gratitude as well, Chairperson Hockenhall. Our chair mentioned that we did have our State of the District today, and so I just wanted to do a brief overview of what we did discuss today and encourage everyone to access the recording and the information that we're going to share. We actually spent a couple hours this morning with board members, some family members, staff, community partners. We began by revisiting some of our previous strategic initiatives and where we've been and kind of where we are now, including highlights of some key accomplishments and lessons that we've learned over the years as we continue to improve teaching, learning, student engagement. And then we went into And then we, uh, went into student performance outcomes, comparing past and present outcomes, which, you know, gave us an opportunity to celebrate some of the growth while also acknowledging uh, the work that we still have to do, uh, to close gaps and ensure that all of our students are having access. Um, we explored some of our fiscal and operational landscape issues that support our schools and also that create challenges and opportunities uh, in shaping how we allocate our resources to meet student needs. And then we reviewed, uh, the key themes that have emerged thus far from our strategic planning process, phase one of the process. So I'll do a a brief, um, overview of those themes and then remind all of us that we are now shifting into phase two of the process, which, um, allows us to take those themes and engage, go back again, engage with community to hear how it is that you all think we should go about actualizing on those, um, areas of, uh, priorities that were identified. And so some of the themes include whole and healthy students, making sure that we nurture students' unique academic, mental, emotional, and physical health, not only in schools but outside of school. Um, another theme was expansive learning and opportunity, which is, um, described as collaborating more and better with community to offer students a variety of learning opportunities that, um, allow them to pursue their respective dreams and contribute positively to society. Another theme, uh, was trusting in collaborative relationships, embracing one another as valued partners across all levels of the organization and for all, uh, members of the community. Um, also skilled and diverse teams, and that is recruiting, developing, and retaining, uh, dedicated and skillful teachers and staff, and building an empowering, um, environment for students and all of us in our, in the community. And lastly, operational efficiency was another theme, which is, uh, focusing on using resources effectively to provide high-quality services. These, again, these are themes, and so these are broader, um, areas of focus, and so now we begin to, as we go to phase two, uh, narrow in on, um, what these could look like, sound like, and feel like as we, uh, get closer to the development of our three-year strategic plan and the 10-year vision for the district. Um, that, uh, concludes, uh, the report. I will end, um, with a a remembrance of a long-term, uh, educator who, uh, we actually heard some, some comment today. Um, where Statu Share did pass away, uh, suddenly, um, on Friday, November 8th, Dorrette Marlene Jarrett was a cherished resident of Hartford, Connecticut, and a very, very dedicated substitute teacher at Hartford Public High School. Um, she passed away following a medical emergency while at the school, despite the prompt and very compassionate efforts of school staff and emergency responders. Um, her passing was due to complications from underlying, uh, an underlying condition. And I just wanted to take a moment to just highlight, um, right, she was born and raised in Somerton, St. James, Jamaica. She was a teacher for several years in Jamaica before coming to Hartford. Began her career, um, at Hartford Public Schools in 2005 as a long-term substitute teaching technology and math to adults and students across many of our schools, including Hartford High, Weaver, Sand. She held, uh, several teaching certifications, and she touched so many lives, um, of, you know, with her smile and the passion for life, her laughter, her kindness, her selflessness in service of other people, um, and their improvement. And, um, just want to share that, um, you know, I I was able to hear, um, so many kind words from our team members at Hartford Public High School. Um, and just wanted to take a moment to share a little bit about, um, Ms. Jarrett, um, here with us tonight. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, we'll now move on to the business agenda. Item 4.1, Contract Continuation Approval, 241 Sports at BK South, EMS, Webster, and Breakthrough North. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with 241 Sports for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $159,232. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. I will toss it back to Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you, and I know that we have some team members here. Um, but before, uh, we get to that, I just want to do a little background and context setting um, as to the mission of 241 Sports, who's been a partner with us for several years now, uh, which is to provide children the opportunity to grow physically and emotionally through the play-filled power of sport. Uh, the vision is a world at play with individuals who are physically and emotionally well. Um, they have also a goal to develop and deliver, uh, sustainable physical literacy development programs um, that focus on building culture, ability, relationships, and enjoyment, blending sport and physical activity, uh, sampling. Um, they have offered summer camps before and after-school programs, uh, vacation weekend camps, coaching clinics. This is a part of the extracurricular grant as a funding source, and, um, four schools would benefit from this opportunity. And in terms of outcomes, um, they're, they've, they've had, uh, small group activities focused on STEM, Connecticut Esports League practice, recruitment of new families have happened, additional classroom space have been, has been allocated. Um, chronic absenteeism rate, um, is at 16%. Uh, average daily attendance at 94% for participants. Um, I will pause there to leave it to see if there are any questions from, from the team members or from our 241 Sport, um, partners that are here as well.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, any questions from the board? Mr. Tatum?
Um, I'd just like to clarify for my own understanding and anyone listening, the funding source. Um, I'll say back my understanding of how this works and and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that this money is a state grant to magnet schools specifically for extracurricular activities?
That is correct.
Okay. And that the schools got to, each individual school got to choose what they would like to do with their extracurricular grant?
Yes, uh, 241 Sports has been, has been a partner, uh, before, and I know that, uh, many of the schools here tonight, probably all of you leveraged, um, ESER, uh, Scaling Equity Innovation Grant funding uh, throughout the pandemic, um, as well. And so now they've, this is an alternate, uh, funding source that has been available.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right. Uh, seeing none. Um, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with 241 Sports for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $159,232. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right, the ayes have it. Uh, the motion moves. Thank you. Item 4.2, Contract Continuation Approval for Relay GSE. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Relay, Relay GSE for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $99,174. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. I will turn it over to Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you, and I do want to offer, um, details relative to the background, uh, the context and how, uh, this benefits, uh, our, our staff. So since 2016, um, we have partnered with Relay, which is a state Department of Education-approved alternate route to certification, um, educator preparation program. And it is unique in that it's designed specifically to respond to, uh, right, the urgent demand that is at play now for effective teachers in hard-to-fill certification areas like science, math, elementary, um, English Language Arts. And there, uh, Relay is a part-time residency program, a design for, uh, those that are currently not certified staff members employed within, right, uh, within the district. Uh, staff interested in applying for this program must have a bachelor's degree and meet specific program criteria. Um, and then beginning in winter of 2022, the district has provided, uh, Relay participants a scholarship of $6,500 that's paid directly to Relay, and it is, uh, split evenly across the year's, uh, three academic terms, uh, summer, spring, and and fall, to cover the remaining out-of-pocket cost of participating in the program. Um, let's see, there's a lot here. Um, I would say that the way, um, the, the release works is that the residents are released from work duty for three hours each Friday so that they can participate in their clinical component with the Relay, uh, professors. And then the, uh, participants apply for and receive an AmeriCorps scholarship that covers up to $7,500 of their total tuition. So as you can hear, right, multiple ways to support, um, those that are not currently certified to become certified and be part of, um, our, our certified instructional team. So this is part of our grow our own, um, efforts, and I will pause there um, in case we have any questions for our team members.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Mills?
Sorry. So the superintendent mentioned other requirements. My understanding is that there is a GPA requirement from their bachelor's program. What is that requirement?
By the State Department of Education, it is required to be a 2.7. Jeep, uh, Relay allows 2.5. Um, the state will allow 10% of those admitted into the program to not meet that GPA, and they have to write a statement, may have to have, um, additional references. Um, but that is a barrier for some of our, um, current staff who want to, uh, enter into Relay.
Do you know how many teachers or not teachers, how much, how many staff members we or the state has denied because of that GPA requirement?
I would say offhand, probably about 10.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I have a follow-up on that as well. Um, so, um, now in saying that, that the comment is, the the staff that are, that are applying, our staff that are currently in schools, and in some cases, they are performing the job as substitute teachers, they're performing the job as paras, and they're performing those jobs, in many cases, uh, successfully in some ways, even, um, exceptionally. And so I'm asking the question, um, can we refer that up to the state to, in some ways, have that also be some consideration? We, at some level, the whole idea of GPAs is an indicator of some kind of success and program with the cess in the role. And some level, if a person's been two or three years in the district, and, um, they're successfully doing that, I would at least ask you to elevate to the, to the state to give that some consideration because they're they're, we have staff who in some ways are being demoralized because they're doing the job, but yet they're being told, you must wait because we can only take 10% this year. Force them to wait an additional year to do something, do something they actually want to do, have passion to do, and would be more beneficial to us if they were given the opportunity. Response?
Uh, I mean, we can raise that to the superintendent for her to be, to to suggest that to the State Department of Ed. Um, one of the things that we are doing is also looking at some other programs that are coming down the pike with Central, University of St. Joe's, and University of Hartford to set up apprenticeships. Um, and the idea is that we would utilize our own staff to become apprentices. Um, that would also require additional funding, but that is another avenue. It would provide an opportunity for staff who maybe do not have the G, required GPA by the State Department of Ed to be enrolled in the program on a probationary basis, take a couple of courses, show that they are able to earn, uh, at least to be average, and then they can be enrolled in the program. So those are some of the things that we're also looking at. If we can't change the GPA, let's look at what other, um, alternatives do we have to, um, provide those opportunities for our staff who are committed to Hartford Public Schools and the students and families here.
Um, yeah, thank you for that feedback. Um, that was available, I think, when I was in grad school. I remember helping folks to actually, um, matriculate, right, by having some time to prove that they can actually perform. Um, so thank you for that.
Sure.
How many staff members from HPS are currently enrolled in Relay?
We have 10 enrolled right now in the program.
Is that the capacity that you have, or you're at the maximum capacity, or?
There really is no capacity. Some years we have more and some years we have less. It depends also on the funding because, um, the tuition costs are a barrier for some of our staff. So it depends on whether we can, um, confirm that we have scholarship funding.
And additionally, this year, we found out through, uh, the Relay program that the AmeriCorps, um, scholarship that is usually granted to students was not going to be allowed. Um, so we found that out very late in the game. And so as part of the proposal is that, um, that we have in front of you is to, uh, have the district use our alliance grant funding, which is, um, being utilized to increase our educator diversity to support our staff, um, so they don't have to take that burden on of having to pay for that unanticipated, um, tuition.
This is new, um, to me. Um, how long does one take to earn the certification once enrolled at Relay?
It's two years. So the first year, they're in their clinicals and they take their classes. And then the second year, they're in their residency. So they're acting as a teacher of record in the classroom, and then they receive their certification at the end of their program completion, which is two years. So then their third year, they'll be teaching under their certification.
And what is the tuition usually?
Um, well, yeah, go ahead.
It varies. Um, it goes anywhere from 17 to like 26,000, depending on the program that they're in. For the full two years.
Per year, though, 17 to 20 something per year?
Total for the full two years. So it can be anywhere from a little over 5,000 to a little over 14,000 because the first year of the program costs more than the second year of the program because they're in classes, they have more classes than the first year.
And part of the, um, appeal of this program is that it allows our staff to earn while they're learning. So they are not forced to have to take a leave of absence from the district to, uh, conduct their student teaching. It allows them to conduct the student teaching job embedded in the district, um, through, they have one period per, per, um, day, and then three hours clinical, uh, practice on Fridays. So, um, they have that benefit of being able to maintain their salary and, um, their benefits.
So the, the $99,000 or so for the contract goes to Relay? And in addition to that, there's a per pupil tuition that has to be paid?
No, if they receive the scholarship funding that we're requesting, they won't have any out-of-pocket expenses, which is what we are looking for today. So they won't have any out-of-pocket expenses if we are able to secure this scholarship.
For how many, um, students to enroll, or staff members to enroll in the program?
There's 10 people currently enrolled in the program.
So this is specifically for the 10?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Ms. Birdy?
So historically, what is the success rate from the time, from the long time that we've been doing this? And are the teachers still here, the retention, all of that stuff, to, for us to say is worth it?
Yes, um, actually, last year, we have 100% of those in the second year, um, receive and transition into positions under their reg, resident educator certificate. Um, we have 26, um, folks still teaching here in Hartford Public Schools that have graduated from the program. And we've also increased the number of, um, black and brown teachers in our schools um, because 70% of the participants identify as BIPOC. So we have a lot to really be happy about with this partnership.
Through you, Madam Chair, 26 out of how many?
38.
Okay, so do you have some that are not successful in the program? So what happens with them? Like, what's the goals for? Like, what's the goals for them?
Yeah, we've had a couple of folks who were not able to pass the praxis. The first couple of years are really learning for us, a learning experience to have best to support our staff. We actually had some people who, one or two, who completed the program, got into the classroom and realized that they wanted, it wasn't for them, that they wanted to go back to their par educator positions. And then, some other folks, we've lost to other districts after they served their time here in Hartford. They were sought after by other districts just because of the recruiting from other districts.
Okay, so...
They are required, though, to sign an MOU, so they have to teach two to three years in the district after they receive their certification because we are trying to retain these folks to teach our Hartford Public Schools students.
And we have had a few of them also go on to, after earning their elementary certification, earn their T-Saw as well.
Okay, so, but who is in control of the MOU amount of time? Who says if you're gonna, if we're paying for you, you're only doing two to three years? Are we in control of that number? That we're asking them to say you have to work that amount of time with Hartford?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that number needs to be increased. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Mr. Mills?
Yeah, a statement before we vote, if that's in order. Again, this is not actually directed at you, so this is gonna sound like it's upset, but it's not. It's for the record. I plan on voting yes. But, so this is an excellent program. We should be encouraging our staff to get certified and become teachers, not only because of the teacher shortage across the state and country, but we have good people who want to commit to Hartford as teachers, and that is absolutely commendable. We absolutely want our city youth to be taught by those who are reflective of them and our communities. But, this board and this district need to do more to advocate a change in the state GPA requirement. I'm gonna give you an example, not gonna name a name because they will hurt me, but I know a substitute teacher who has applied on multiple occasions to this program and was denied because of their GPA and is an undergrad. This person is qualified to teach our children as a substitute on a daily basis and has taught a full fourth grade class for an entire year, but isn't qualified for this program because the state cares about their GPA from 10 to 15 years ago. I am the Assistant City Treasurer for the City of Hartford with a history degree. Nobody has ever asked me for my GPA. We need to do more for our staff who want to help, but we need to advocate for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, and it's really to ask for retention, what's our retention rate for teachers, new teachers in general? And you may not have that information, but I think we need to understand that to get a context of, because right now, the retention rate that you've talked about for this program is almost 70%, which, from previous conversations, feels like about the same, if not better than retention rate for just new teachers in terms of how long they stay with the district and the three to five-year window. And so, I would like you to gather that information so you can give us some context and comparison. Because I do think the comment made by Board Member Brody is, is one that's trying to seek value for what we're offering. And so, I do think we need to have, understand what this program is producing versus just the regular recruitment of teachers off the street, as it were. And I think that will be helpful for us, and to make an informed decision moving forward is how to structure this program. That's my comment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one last question. How many applicants do you get a year? I know you currently have 10 enrolled. How many applied?
It's hard to gauge because we actually don't have, the application process is handled by Relay because it's their program. We help and facilitate our folks who may be interested. We have host information sessions, meet with them one-on-one to help them gather their information, everything that they need to meet the deadlines. So it's hard to say because sometimes people will apply directly to Relay, and we don't know until after the fact, or some people will, or think they're going to apply after we've worked with them one-on-one, and then, they don't. So it's been kind of hard to gauge that, but we are, based on the conversation that we had, the committee meeting, we are going to start tracking that.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I have a question with regards to teachers who decide after perhaps one year that they don't want to remain with the district. How does the payback work?
Thankfully, we haven't approached that. So we haven't had that experience. I would say that the folks who want to commit to this program have already committed to Hartford Public Schools, and this is really where they want to be. They see themselves having their careers here. You know, it's just, sometimes it's a matter of competing, you know, salaries with another district, but I've also had people who did this program left because of a higher salary but want to come back. So we haven't really had that opportunity yet, and I hope we never do, where they want to leave before their three years. But that would be something that would be prorated and paid back over time. Any last questions, comments? Nope, all right, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Relay GSE for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $99,174. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays?
Nay.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. I will move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are 5.2, acceptance of funds and contract approval for adult education cooperating eligible entities grant, 5.3, second reading and adoption of the Title IX and relevant policies, 5.4, resolution, approval of authorized signatory for Hartford Public Schools, Ms. Caitlin Richard, and 5.5, approval of the minutes from the October 15th, 2024 meeting. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Point of clarification, the second reading and adoption of the Title IX policy, does it actually have to be read? No? Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, just a comment. The, there is a contract for continuation, I think, or for adult ed and the CEE grants. Just clarification because, to me, the amount of those funds would seem to trigger that it maybe should be seen separate and distinct, but I'm wondering, in this case, if we're just accepting the funds versus it being the allocation of our funds? I just want to clarify that we're just voting to accept the funds.
Superintendent?
That is correct. It is accepting the funds, not paying out for programming or services.
Right, and so, just a public consumption, I'm asking that question because I don't want folks to feel like we're gonna bury a multimillion-dollar contract in a consent agenda. So I just wanted it to be clear why it's in that situation.
We will be back whenever the time comes to get board approval as necessary for services and programming. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Nope, seeing none. Do I have a motion to vent, to vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? Abstentions? All right, the ayes have it. All right, we are on to executive session, collective bargaining. We will be going into executive session to discuss the proposed collective bargaining agreement for the Hartford Principals and Supervisors Association Local 222 AFSA AFL-CIO. Do I have a motion to enter? Oh, I first, I think I need to say who I will be taking with me. Sorry, I'm out of order here. I apologize. I, we will be taking in with us Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, Deputy Paul Foster, and Attorney Lori Meserak with that. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
And second?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the ayes have it. We will be back to vote on the contract. Thank you. Thank you.
...
One, two, three, four.